Thank you. I'd like to call to order this committee the whole meeting of October 9th, 2025. At this point in time, I'll put out a call if there are any declarations of interest on this agenda. Seeing no hands raised, we'll move on. We have business arising from the minutes. We have one notice of motion from Councillor Gregg. So in a moment, Councillor Gregg, I will ask you to read out your notice of motion. Without any explanation or intro, I'll look for a seconder for you. And if we have a seconder and it's on the floor for discussion, I will return to you directly. So, um, would you like to, could you read, sorry, the way we usually do it back home is the person who's serving the notice of motion reads it out, and then we look for a seconder before there's any discussion. So over to you. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. And I'd like to introduce the notice of motion. Whereas Part Two of the municipal act generally confers broad authority on the municipality to enable the municipality to govern its affairs as it considers appropriate and to enhance the municipality's ability to respond to municipal issues. And whereas community safety is of foremost concern to residents, and whereas automated speed traffic cameras assist in responding to resident concerns, now therefore be it resolved that this council asks MPP Vickers and MPP Sanderson to support this position in opposing any provincial legislation introduced to prohibit the use of automated speed enforcement and that this resolution be circulated to each municipality within Gray County requesting their endorsement, and that the resolution be sent to Premier Ford, Minister of Transportation, Pravmeet Sikariya, MPP Vickers, and MPP Sanderson.
Thank you very much. And I, okay, well, sorry, directionally, I saw Councillor Dobrine will second that motion, but I did acknowledge the other hands that have been raised. It's now on the floor for discussion. So I will look to Councillor Gregg to introduce your notice, any further details you'd like to provide.
Thank you. And I'd like to just provide this notice also as a tribute to a member of our community in Owen Sound who campaigned for years canvassing for candidates who were strong supporters of looking after the taxpayer. That's something that Bill King, who was a member for many years on our operations committee in Owen Sound advocated for and supported initiatives that looked after the taxpayer. And we lost Bill probably a little more than a year ago. But this is somewhat of a tribute to Bill because he was a strong advocate for community safety and automated speed enforcement and cameras were part of that in Bill's, in Bill's mind. So I am quite bothered by what the premier has initiated here. It is demonstrated when he announced this legislation, he had the mayor of Bond standing beside him. Bond removed traffic cameras in their communities, and that is fine. That's democracy as it should be. And I applaud him for that. But I think what is most important is that municipalities have the opportunity to decide whether or not those traffic cameras are something that are a benefit in their community, that respond to residents' concerns. And if you do not feel that way, and you have them already installed, you can walk back that decision municipally. It's a municipal decision. And he aligned himself the day he announced the legislation with other mayors who demonstrated that. It is a municipal decision, and it's a municipal decision as provided in the municipal act. If you want to take away the ability for municipalities to look after resident concerns, change the municipal act. I challenge you to do that because that invites a whole lot more public input and a lot more time. It's announced that the assault on the taxpayer is over. And I asked myself, really? Who do you think funds the provincial government and all the infrastructure that you're now asking to be created out of a new fund? What I'd like to do is invite the premier to come to Owen Sound to visit with me and one of our fine men and women who drive a snowplow and a fire truck, and we will crush a box of Chapman's ice cream bars as we walk around the city, and we will inform the premier and the premier staff of what kind of obstacles that speed bumps and enhanced crosswalks provide in terms of the machinery and the mechanics in a snowy area that we have to look after for, for five, hopefully not six months of the year. But it's hard in the equipment. It's hard on money. It's hard on the taxpayer. It's hard on people who we're not breaking the law if you don't speed. That's, it's a fundamental, easy question. If you don't want to get fined, don't speed past a school or through a community safety zone. Hopefully you learn your lesson. And then it's not resultant upon the taxpayers who may not have a car, who may choose to walk as their means of transportation or use public transit. These are the people now that are being asked to pay more taxes for a new fund provincially to resolve, to respond to speeding that may or may not make a difference in moving the needle. It reminds me of, to steal a quote from Abraham Lincoln, let's have a government for the people, by the people. And that's why I would hope the premier would entertain a free vote at Queen's Park so that each legislator can represent their people and not have a whip vote where we've lost that ability now to have meaningful dialogue at Queen's Park. Let's have democracy. Let's have a free vote. Let's have legislators who've been elected represent their communities. We're here as mayors and deputy mayors representing what we think is best in our communities. I'm asking this council to ensure that we have the opportunity to address those items in our community without those abilities being taken away from us and positioned in the sole hands of one person and the prime minister's office or the premier's office, which has become far too prevalent, it seems, in the last several years. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that introduction. So it is now on the floor for discussion from further comments from other council members. We'll go to Councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov. The biggest concern with the way the province is addressing this is trying to attack it as if it is a municipality trying to do a cash grab. And this is the terminology that the premier is using, and it is frustrating to what Councillor Gregg just spoke to, when the objective is to try to change the culture of speeding within Ontario. Currently, wherever you go, the general culture is 20 kilometers over a speed limit. We design roads and then we have repeated calls on probably weekly basis. Everybody here gets a call from some resident talking about the speeding across and in front of their property and in front of their area. Trying to implement a culture change takes many different methods. The premier responded to a letter that was sent to him by many different mayors and local municipal politicians from across Ontario by saying, if the objective of the speed camera is to prevent speeding, then it's failing miserably. Well, according to that standard, then your stop signs are failing, your signage for the speed limit is failing, your signage for crosswalks is failing, because everywhere there is a culture of impatience, of driver, lack of driver empathy in terms of who's around them. It is a method to try to address that in addition to all the other things we're trying to change. I think that there's a frustration with Premier Ford overstepping into what the motion is speaking to our jurisdiction of trying to make controls. But fundamentally, for me, this is a safety thing that residents bring up time and time again. We're trying to change the culture, and the premier is preventing us from doing it.
Thank you. And we'll go to Councillor Dobrine.
Thank you. And as the seconder, thank you for recognizing me. I have to echo both speakers, both of my colleagues, but also not all municipalities have, are, are, sorry, let me rephrase this. Most municipalities with automated speed enforcement are following the guidelines and the revenue that they are getting, which isn't the full amount because the province gets a significant portion of that, are reinvesting the revenue specifically for improved safety in those community safety zones. So that the taxpayer isn't on the hook for those improvements. That's my comment, and I was pleased to support this motion.
Thank you. Other comments? We'll go to Councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. That may be a devil's topic here, but just, I see two parts in this notice of motion. One is the ability for municipalities to make decisions. Well, back in 1980, 1990, sorry, I gotta get my dates here. 2008, 2009, there's what they call the Green Energy Act came into play. It took away our ability to decide for green energy projects. And that wasn't playing until for quite a long time. And there was a lot of discussion around that. I know with us in Greyhounds, we developed policy around placement of turbines, and that was fully. So it's not ununique that we've dealt with legislation that does direct or guide or basically tells what the lower tier or the municipalities, what they, because we are creatures of the province. We know that, right? On the part of speed cameras, I remember at the Feversham Fair a few weeks back, having a large discussion around a number of people having concern of a particular area of the municipality south of Greyhounds that had speed cameras, and the threshold was two kilometers over the speed. So if it was a 40, you got a ticket for 42. Which seemed, it was quite a bit of a concern around that. And that, I go to the threshold, it was just on the news two days ago. One of the councillors from the City of Toronto is going to advocate because the threshold is not disclosed. I think in the sense of our democracy and everything else, why don't the people know what that threshold is if it's 10 over or 12 over or five over or two over? So I think there's a bit of a, and I think as Deputy Mayor or Councillor Nielsen said, it's an understanding that if you're on a provincial highway or municipal road or whatever, that from a, from a police perspective, if you're maybe under 15, yeah, that's just the way it has been. And I think nobody's going to disagree with that. We know that. So I think the threshold is one of the issues that, that, I know that was the big discussion that I had with a number of people there. Some of the other things I've heard is, is if it was set up for community safety zones and school zones, I also hear it's in other zones. There's no debate for the protection of kids or those areas where the pedestrians, I, you know, maybe there needs to be rework of this, but not totally out. I don't disagree with that. But that is something else that it's been on others that I've heard. I don't know a lot about this. Signage has been another thing that we, interesting that the City of Toronto has said, look, we need more signs up. We need to tell people. So maybe there has been a few issues that needs to be rectified. I heard of an example of that same community, south of Greyhounds, that a fella was racing to the hospital because his mother was dying at 4:30 in the morning, at 4:30 in the morning, and got a huge ticket. We're, and, and so is a safety zone at 4:30 in the morning. I know in Gray Road Four, we have the flashing light in Maxwell goes off when it's a school, goes from 50 to 40. It's a school zone. It's reduced speed at that time when there's buses and kids. So I guess in summary, you know, I think the intention was there. I think there needs to be a rework on some of this stuff to maybe get more public support. And I just think that there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dynamics here that one size isn't fitting all. And I think one of the things is the threshold. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just looking around for any first hands before I go back to any additional comments. Not seeing any, so I'll go back to council. Oh, I'll go to Council, Deputy Warden Milne, and then over to Councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden. I think the fundamental thing here is the speed limit is the law. So if the speed limit's 40, you're regardless of what you think the threshold should be. If you're over 40, you're breaking the law, whether you're in a safety zone or not. So if I hurt somebody in the middle of the night at 4:30, speeding, do I get a lesser fine? Is that sort of the logic that we're going through here? I had a discussion with the local MPP, and he stated that he had heard that a local business has incurred over $1,000 in speeding fines, and that was unfair. I said, well, the logical thing would be for that company to slow down, and they wouldn't get the fine. It's as simple as that. But to bring it right back to what the motion is speaking to, if the premier really wants to dictate your municipalities, what they should do, there's an election next year for municipal government, and maybe he should run there. Otherwise, stick to your net. Thank you, Madam Warden.
Thank you. And just in follow-up, I know that the Big City Mayor's Caucus from AMo and a, an interview with the Mayor of Burlington, Mary Anne Needward, I believe the ask, it's not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Don't throw out the tool that can benefit our communities. Let's visit what the threshold should be. Let's visit what additional signage there should be. Let's visit if there's a timeframe. But let's have the conversation as opposed to ripping tools out of our toolbox that help us protect our citizens.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other further first hand, so I'll go back to Councillor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden. And I'm just communicating comments that have been made to me. Further from that situation, the individual that, and I'll tell you, if I have a loved one that's dying and I only have so much time to get there, I may speed as well. It's my choice, absolutely. But I have heard that that individual has got that ticket removed. But the point is, when there's a police officer that does pull you over, there is maybe some discretionary discussion around that. And with the tickets, there's no discretionary. It's get the ticket. Obviously, this individual did follow up and, and did, but I think in a sense of, from a public's perspective, it's maybe the public split on this. But I think in the sense that maybe to what Councillor Dobrine has said is, it needs to be a rework and maybe use the tool specifically for what it's designed for and, you know, from that. But I'm just communicating comments that I have received.
Okay, thank you. Looking online, looking around the table, not seeing any other hands up for discussion. So I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. Okay. We do not have any delegations this morning, and I'm just going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask momentarily about which items may or may not be pulled from the consent agenda. We'll take it down to that point. I will then call a brief break. We do have, we do have a scheduled agenda, a scheduled lunch at a certain time. It is, so I'm just being conscious of that. So we'll have a little bit of an earlier but a shorter break because we will actually be calling for lunch prior to 12 o'clock. So with that, then I will move on to number five, which is a determination of items requiring separate discussion. There are only three listed in item six, six A, B, and C. Are there any items that someone wishes to pull for further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. That's excellent. So therefore, it's recommended that the following consent items, consent items be received and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councillor Body, seconded by Councillor Nielsen. It's now on the floor for discussion. Seeing no hands up, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. So that will mean that after a brief break, if we could try to be back by 11:10, that would be wonderful. We will pick up at item seven A when we return. Thank you. Okay, so we've got that moved by Councillor Nielsen and seconded by Councillor Pringle. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome Director McNapp. It's now on the floor for discussion. Welcome Director McNabb.
Morning, Warden County Council. Happy to be here today to talk about the new Feverisham base. With the comprehensive deployment review that we did in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. That review was to address increased call volume across the county over the next ten years. And with that, we were balancing out urban response times with rural response times, you know, at the same time addressing increased call volume. That call volume is expected to go up sixty eight percent over ten years. And we need roughly about forty percent in resources to match that. So you can see the first cars that we added were in One Sound and Hanover where our more urban areas are, where large volume of the calls are. But a part of the deployment review was to recommend improved rural response times. And so this is the first base that we're building in Feverisham with approval. This area has been an underserviced area, but compared to the other areas that we've talked about before in the past, I believe councillor McQueen, we've been talking this probably since about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That eventually that would be a place that we would go to build a base in that southeast corner of the county. That that area right now is probably, I think, our closest base to the Feverisham area is twenty one kilometers up to twenty nine and Greg Lee. So this will definitely enhance that response into that area. And again, that's balancing out, you know, the low call volume versus a a a large area to cover. So the the site that was chosen was at the old Sandown at four nine four seven forty Gray Road two. And we are, we're at the final stages, I believe, of the land transfer now, through Highlands to the county. So we did a design build, a partial design build for mechanical electrical. We did a lot of the work as far as architectural, myself, Aaron Whitney in house. Great work that he does. And we released the tender on August fifteenth and we had the results back on September fifteenth. There was only one bidder was DOM Construction and they they met all the requirements of the bid. Our budget for this project was one point six million. The bid costs from DOM come in over budget, two million one hundred and fifty five thousand or two million one hundred and ninety two thousand with HST. We're predicting the the professional fees to be around two hundred thousand dollars. So that makes the total cost of the project two million three hundred and ninety two thousand, which is an overage of seven hundred eighty six thousand one hundred dollars. Now, this project will not be completed in twenty twenty five, but if it's approved, it'll be moved over to the twenty twenty six capital budget. So this project is funded completely from Debenzer. The overage will result in a in a dementia payment going from one hundred and fourteen thousand to one hundred and sixty nine thousand eight hundred, which is an increase of fifty five thousand eight hundred. The budgets proposed for Aitken Thornbury and Cobble Beach will also be updated to match these new numbers. Thinking that this may be the realistic cost going forward for these additional bases. And I would like to mention also, and we've talked about that briefly before, but now more formal, we'll bring a report forward next week. Or sorry, next council, that the Dundalk base, we will have to build one there because the fire department needs the space. Then we'll have to find a new location for for the Dundalk base. So this part of these increases are offset by the grant around interest and for capital assets from the government. When you look at our annual increase, the comprehensive deployment plan, that's where we pay the four hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. When we build in these extra costs to the bases, that increase goes up twenty one thousand dollars, one hundred to four hundred thirty one thousand dollars per year. So this just chart just shows the overage. Now, we have talked with Tom, we have the ability to negotiate because there was only one bidder. And not included in this, we feel that we can find approximately two hundred thousand dollars in savings. Just some different things that Dom has suggested that we can do. And we will continue to look for other cost savings as well as we work through the project if this is approved. The base is being built to net zero. And it does meet the requirements of the county to continue to build in these net zero. If we look at Durham, Durham, if we add solar there, it'd be the same with Feverisham, it would be a net zero building. At this time, we don't have any additional funding for the solar. So this is what the base will look like and we are going to be building again with approval. These same basis, hopefully that will save costs down the road. It's bait built for have two vehicles and the crew area for the ones that were able to make it to Durham will be similar to what the crew area is across the county.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction and we'll put it out to committee, the whole members for questions. We'll begin with councillor McKay.
Yes, thank you, Kevin. Through you, Warden. I attended the open house in Durham and it stated that it is a state of the art plus it was the main headquarters for supplies. So these new ones that are being built, are they on a smaller dimension compared to the one in Durham? Or would you have another one somewhere for main supply station too?
Yeah, the one in Durham was meant to house the our logistics and supplies for the county as well as our supervisor. So this that base with that similar design, the layout, we will be cutting roughly a third of all these new bases. And that's roughly that extra portion that was meant for admin and logistics. That's the third. We did change the orientation of the garage. So it's a true drive through, so you're not always backing in. That was a suggestion from staff. It is, you know, you have this double stack base and you're always trying to move in front of another vehicle back in this way. It's a true drive through. So that's about the only other difference as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll look around the room. We'll go to councillor Greg next.
Thank you. My first question is, can you expand upon what are the components that make up the two hundred thousand dollars in discretionary cutbacks?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I can go from memory if that's okay, like the best. There was some contingency that we were able to reduce based upon our knowledge of what terms coming in that I wish I had the numbers to say today, but when we did the planning for Durham. I think we did it really well and we were able, we didn't have to use that contingency as much as what we thought. There's some civil work and we're even looking at more now as far as engineering around stormwater management. And we've, we don't believe that we'll need the curbing. We've reduced concrete and that will change to turn to asphalt. There is reduced the flagpole, reduced defense. We we talked about the building itself, about size and in talking with Dom is like obviously cut back size, I'll cut back some costs, but really because you need those major components, doesn't really change a lot. So we 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 went down that road. But yeah, we tried, tried to balance those as best we could. Again, these these those savings are not part of that total right now. Hopefully that will.
Thanks for that. So most of the savings are outside of the building envelope. Effectively, from what I'm hearing and in I don't, I mean, I've got them wrote down here. I do have significant concerns here with before percent professional fees, this is something that's thirty four percent over budget. With professional fees, forty nine percent over budget. And it would be more palatable to me if there was three or four bidders. But I am not comfortable in approving issuing a tender for for this project when we're effectively forty nine percent over budget. We've got some room for cutbacks, but you know, thirty four percent before professional fees, thirty four percent with one tender. I think we need to take another run at this in the future and see what type of competition in the marketplace. I I think Kevin, you and your team internally are doing a great job of looking at where can we shave off some savings? And we're, as councillor McKay indicated, they're a slightly reduced size from Durham. These bases going forward because it is a centralized place in Durham, but there's a, there's an element here that I'm concerned is just because it's Debenzer, we should approve it. But it's it's inflated perhaps because there's just not competition right now that that was bidding. Anytime that, and it was deputy warden Mill mentioned earlier, you know, it's not a sole source. But he had to ask for convincing information on a sole sourcing item. One, one, one bidder is also somewhat concerning too. It's it's always great to see competition that's transparently placed in front of council and the public. So at this time, I my biggest concern is is that there is one bidder, they do great work. However, I think we should go back out in the future and see what kind of engagement we do get from the from the public sector, from the private sector again, in terms of interest and trying to shave down the the overall overall cost of the project.
Director McNabb, did you want to comment or any director Spicer or anyone else?
The budget amount of one point six was a calculation that we utilized by looking at other builds and price per square foot. And that that's one thing that maybe I take responsibility for is that maybe that was lower than what we probably shouldn't have to be in with. That's one segment of that. And that may be some of the discrepancy in the prices.
I'll just let director Spicer come to the lectern.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Um, I I can understand and appreciate councillor Greg's point as far as having one bid. It was publicly advertised. And we can't control who bids or who doesn't. My concern would be we've now got a a bid that has been publicly disclosed. You would have to wait for some period of time before you would go back out because I'd be concerned that somebody would say that now we're bid shopping. And we've disclosed Dom's bid.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a, I'll take that as a follow, I'm going to take a follow up from councillor Greg on the same topic and then I'm going to go over to councillor McQueen next.
And thank you. And I just want to be you don't need to take responsibility at all because it's nothing to to your work in preparing the document. I'm just commenting on the fact that you don't have anything that's coming in to be able to compare the one bid to. So I just, when you said I'll take responsibility for that, I thought, no, you don't have to take responsibility for anything because there is no fault to be found with with anyone here. It's just the discomfort with with not having comparable. So thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. And I I just want to, I already had in the queue actually virtually councillor Bourne Young is going to speak first and then I'll go to councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to county council. Good morning again. I've left less concerns about the one bid only because they don't, at the time when they're bidding, they don't know how many bids are going to be coming in. So there could be ten, the 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 winning proponent does not know that. So that that's less of a concern to me. The one concern of any delay that we do, we know the construction costs more money. So if we delay any further, we've seen time and time again with with builds, with roads, each month, each quarter, each year will exponentially add to the cost of the same thing. My question is, I'm just reading the, you're asking council for two million one hundred and fifty five thousand. The expected cost is two, three, nine, two, nine hundred. It's saying that will be a savings of two hundred dollars, but that's not reflected in the chart. So just for clarity purposes, is that the reason why the committee is being asked for two million one hundred fifty five thousand? As opposed to two, three, nine, two, nine hundred, just for clarity purposes through the the warden.
Yeah, today is the award is to Dom for two million one hundred and ninety two thousand, but also bringing forward that the project we're expecting to be professional fees two hundred thousand. Again, that doesn't include any savings that we can work out with them. So the award today is for Dom of two million one hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay, is there any follow up to that councillor Bourne?
Um, yes, Madam Warren, just so just as a follow up, so but we're being asked for two million one hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. So where where would the reflection of the savings be at the end of the day? If there is any of the two hundred thousand.
Okay, we'll just give a moment for director Spicer and director McNabb to come forward with their response to that.
Through you, Madam Warden, to respond to councillor Bourne Young's question. What you're being asked for is to approve the award of two million one hundred and fifty five thousand. And so the the chart that you've seen on page three of the report, the expected costs include the non-rebatable HST. And if we find the savings that director McNabb has identified, those would be in the form of negative change orders that would reduce the total value of the contract. But the award today would be the two million one hundred and fifty five thousand excluding HST.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. A couple of things. Start off with county council is wanting to pay two dollars for the land. So I think just going back to councillor Burgonoff with regards to process, I think we have to protect our process. Because I think in fairness to Dome Construction, which has been in business for a long time. They've been doing a lot of municipal buildings, a lot of buildings. So I don't think there's a need to debate their quality of work. You know, they had no indication or knowledge that they're they're only sold bitter until so it comes out. So I don't think there's any fault of anybody there. Obviously, it's it's unfortunate that it's higher than what was budgeted, but I think we look at last couple of years, construction costs are continuing to rise and everything else. You know, just go to Home Depot and buy something that you bought two years ago and everything's The other thing I want to say is, yes, what Kevin made a comment was this area, you know, has been an underserviced area and I did raise it. And then we had, we had a a company that did the study and showed improved that it was an underserviced area. I know a number of years back, there was a young man that was badly injured and I know for the area with regards to either Thornbury, Markville or Dundalk. Time is of the essence when when somebody is seriously injured and unfortunately he lost his life and not saying it's any fault of anybody, but there was a bit of a delay getting there. Just getting to serve to serve that individual. And I remember the conversation about that with an individual and, you know, it's too bad, but obviously the study showed that it was an underserviced area. And traffic and everything in that area is growing, you know, with the growth in Blue Mountains and everything else, Gray Road two, thirty one, thirty four, one twenty four, you know, it's just the the traffic patterns have changed. And it's just more and more people that's traveling through the area. So I think the justification is there. It's unfortunate. It's a little higher than we are, but I I don't, I don't think we can wait. I think we need to move forward. The other comment I do have to you, Kevin, is if there is a need, like just like the Dundalk building where they 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 need it for expanding their fire hall, can this building be added to an extra bay? Is it designed that way? Is there a possibility that somewhere down the future? Just like the situation you you mentioned in Dundalk, it is, is that, I guess, anything can be added to. But is there any any incorporation of that ever being incorporated into this building?
I I also don't have the information that can answer that. I would think you could be able to add beside it, but it also needs on size of land and those type of things, but I I also don't have enough expertise. We'd have to ask Aaron, who's probably the best person to ask. I only ask it because somebody asked me to ask that question because that was a thought that somebody made to me. So I was asking a question on that part.
Okay, thank you. So as we focus in on our discussion on the question that's at hand here, we'll go to the deputy warden next.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Kevin, for the report. In there, you mentioned that this building Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Kevin, for the report. In there, you mentioned that this building and the Durham one indeed as well will be net zero ready. I'm wondering how much that cost adds to the bill? Because I can appreciate that we want to reduce our energy consumption. And the thought is we could put solar panels on at a future date, but I think the reality is most builds don't have that done. You either put them on when you're building the thing or it doesn't happen. It's like adding bays to it later, not likely going to happen. And as time goes on, it becomes less cost efficient to add new stuff to an old building. So I'm just wondering, is there a potential, if we're not going to put the panels on now, would there be some savings in not allowing the building to do that in the near future? Please.
Yes, that is something we could look at. One thing that we were wanting to do and we're still working through is looking for grants to for these net zero initiatives that would cover the costs. Solar for Durham, I believe, was 225,000 that, you know, we'd be able to get a grant. Hopefully someday that working through that work to be able to get to get to a net zero. But is it something that could be taken out? Like I think that's something we look at, there's like EV chargers and I guess you're looking at heat pumps and stuff like that and types of windows and all thatness.
Okay, thank you. Looking around the room, I don't see any further hands up nor online. Okay, I think we're ready to call that question then. All those in favor? Okay, and that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, so Director McNabb, don't go far. We'll have a look at number 7B here. It's recommended that report PSRCW 0725 being a report on additional funding to support SOS and extended services be received and that the funds be flowed to partner agencies as outlined in the funding agreement that ends March 31st, 2026. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by the Deputy Warden. It's now on the floor for discussion and Director McNabb, over to you.
Okay, happy to be here to talk about this this morning. You remember earlier this year, we were approved for funding to increase our response to the opioid crisis. And we were able to move our supportive outreach services to seven days a week, which we're still, you know, working through that and getting staffing up to date to do that. But also increasing the resources to be able to respond to that emergency. Part of the work that we're doing, we were asked about doing additional work again to target, you know, the overdose crisis. So we did put in for additional funding on top of what we've already received. This would to further support initiatives within the county. What it will do is support a navigator program in the city of Owen Sound to have two navigators on seven days a week to support people. It also is to support treatments, space at Safe and Sound for SOS. It'll give us ability to have some administrative support for the team. The team's growing. To build dedicated as opposed to being off the side of someone's desk. And also be able to increase the number of, amount of basic needs to people to be able to circulate that. So this is 100% funded through this funding grant and it will go until March 31st, 2026.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do have it open for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, so we're going to begin with Counselor Greg, then go to Counselor Eccles.
Thank you. Through the warden, two key questions, Kevin. Some of the, I'm certainly aware within Owen Sound of some of the concerns of the business community in terms of individuals, particularly at the start of the day in front of businesses and the social navigators here spoken to in the report will support that. Could you expand more so in terms of what their job would look like beyond that? Because upfront, that's the most familiarity is to the pressing need is businesses to like, we need support first thing in the morning to be able to open our doors. Once the day starts, the day is different than first thing in the morning. And also could you expand on what $94,000 in material supplies, equipment looks like? What is that? Because this is just till March. So I guess effectively five months. So, thanks.
Yes, so the navigators, the main role of that is to help the people that are unhoused, community members that need support in the community. So they would be working with them, not just in the morning, but all day long, to be able to connect them to supports and to, you know, meet their needs. Also, the big thing would be doing referrals. But they could do a number of different things. They can do sharps cleanup. They can, if there was items left, they can work with that. Again, the big thing is helping those community members, which ultimately we help them, that helps everybody. And so that's the main plan of this. This is something that's been proposed by at least two agencies before. It's more like it's a trial, see how it goes. So I think it's a good opportunity to have funding to be able to do that and see what those outcomes are like. The basic needs, it could be from clothes, we're getting waterproof boots. We've seen a lot of medical concerns around wet feet, the people that live outside, that they don't have waterproof boots. Significant money around that, coats, food. There are some, you know, us as far as like, there's supplies in that is there's food, part of that, there's tents. Sleeping bags for people that are living outside, you know, to do that. So there's a number of items, a whole list. And we have to spend it by then and we'll do our best to distribute it. But, you know, obviously we will ensure it goes. You know, it may not end up by March, but we'll have it and it'll ultimately be able to be carried on. Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you for expanding on that, Kevin. I'm glad to hear about the additional help in the community in terms of just cleanup. Just a week ago, Saturday, I was through the Julie MacArthur Rec Center and there's individuals doing drugs in the community at the skateboard park. That's not a very welcoming scene for people that want to have fun outdoors through, in great weather at the skateboard park. And it's been certainly a drain, a huge drain on city staff for several years as they try to respond to these ongoing items 24 hours a day. And that's an instance that just shines light on what kind of challenges exist in the community from some of the behaviors there. So thanks. Good to hear that kind of support is also something that this will complement.
Thanks. We'll go to Counselor Eccles.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you. There's no doubt there's a need in our community for this opioid crisis. My fear was one that I've shared maybe with this council a couple of times and continually for a number of years. Here we have funding, federal funding coming at 100% for six months for us to expand our SOS program. Is this a healthcare issue? In my mind, yes, it is. Property tax, supposed to look after healthcare. How much downloading is this? Great, we're getting into it for six months. Six years from now, council around here, which I may be here, I may not be here, be able to express to them. How did we get to this? We're spending eight and a half million dollars. We've had to delay building ambulance bays because we haven't got any money because our paramedics are running around doing healthcare issues. It's a slippery slope. It's one that I we need it. But do we need those that are supposed to be looking after this? It's the guaranteed funding. I guess we're probably the best, our paramedics, to deliver the service. And I don't think there's any question to that. But how much can we deliver and take as a download from the province? From the feds to keep doing their job to the taxpayer? Maybe we should go to the feds and to Doug Ford and say, we need more of those that are breaking the law by speeding so that we can have the funds to be able to do their job. That was a little bit in jest. But the idea of this being a six-month, 100% funded, once we're into it, it's going to be very hard to get out of it. Extremely hard to get out of it. And then it falls to the property taxpayers to support. That's my fear. I will be supporting it at this point in time. But it's one thing to look down. You've got to keep the pressure on. Who should be looking after it? We're delivering a service. We're not building a service.
Okay, thank you, Director McNabb. Did you want to comment or?
Yeah, I don't disagree. This is health, but it's also social services as well. I was the first. Social support means a lot. Like if we can't support people in housing and social services, a lot of the work we do in health really doesn't add up. And so it's tackling that. This really, to tell you the truth, a lot of these enhancements, paramedic services is only one small piece of the pie. We work with partners, CMHA, Bright Shores, and the United Way, Safe and Sound. We work with public health and there's 25 partners beyond that. This is something that's very complex and requires a lot of agencies to address. This funding will go till, this specific funding goes to March 31st, 2026. But we do have funding for seven days a week until mid-January 2027. So it is longer. And our SOS funding, we've been fortunate, that is permanent funding, that is base funding. It's not, it's 100% funded by the province. So that is something that even without this, we'll still have that program, the core of four days a week with our paramedic nurse practitioner, mental health counselors and social navigator, that is ongoing funding, considered base. These have just been in addition to.
Through you, Warden. And further to Director McNabb indicated earlier that this is a trial to see if some of these measures can work. I think that'll hopefully provide us, if it's successful, that provides us with some further evidence to be able to go to the provincial federal government to say that we need some sustained funding in order to keep these programs going. So I think that's something that's just to keep in mind, I guess, in terms of it is on a trial basis to test this out. We think this will be very successful, but we'll be able to have that evidence and true data to be able to report back to the province and federal government to say we need sustained funding to keep this going.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Dobrine and then to Counselor Body.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasov, to that point with regard to collecting the data to support ongoing, the ongoing service, would we have sufficient indication by Roma that would allow us to have a delegation at that point in time? Or consider a delegation to present some of the preliminary findings? Because if the funding is going to expire in March, then what? We could maybe provide the data and the pilot could be extended or, you know, more permanent funding. It's perhaps not an answer we can arrive at today, but something to consider.
Through you, Warden. Thank you for that question, Counselor Dobrine. As part of the initial funding that we received from the federal government was to fund a 0.25 or part-time data analyst to help track and report on some of this data. Whether or not we'll have enough results pre-Roma for this particular piece will be a bit of a question mark. But hopefully we'll have at least some initial results that may inform a delegation brief if that's where council wants to consider that. Those delegation requests are, will likely be discussed by council usually in November. So we're already tracking a list of potential delegation requests based on council's discussions. This is one that we can potentially add to that list and see what data and information that we have at that time to be able to go forward to Roma.
Counselor Body?
I don't know where to begin. Clearly, there's people that are homeless. Clearly, there's people that have mental health and drug addictions. And clearly they're coming from all over Gray County, mostly to One Sound and to Hanover where they're most visible because we have the services that are here. I've said it in this circle before, but Gray County is kicking the living crap out of every other municipality in Ontario with these types of programs. Yet my telephone lights up at City Hall telling me that we're not doing anything. I've got a 10,000-word essay that I send out to people and of course I don't get a thanks for it after they just disappeared. The last phone call I got was a complaint about somebody homeless on an electric bicycle between Fenton and Park Street, which is in Georgian Bluffs. They didn't leave a name, so I couldn't even tell them to phone Sue. I really wish that Gray County would start blasting communications out and how well we're doing and all the things that are going on. We've said this before, but we're not taking credit for our achievements. People in One Sound don't stick their head above the top of the hill to see which way the wind's blowing half the time. And they don't go to Ottawa, they don't go to Berry, they don't go to Sudbury, they don't go to Guelph, they don't go to London, they don't go to these other places. And we are doing extremely well in this community. We have very few people, frankly, per capita that have problems on the street. Yes, they're there. I grew up in a family that had immense clothing store in Main Street that started six years before I was born. And we closed it down about one year before I started practicing law in downtown One Sound. So pretty well my entire life, I've been in business in downtown One Sound. I remember alcoholics that were on the street. I was talking to Luis Guevaras the other day. We're naming them. There has always been people on the street. One Frankie that used to put a window through a Briggs jewelry store, no, the other one, someone else's jewelry store. Every November when it got cold, so he'd get sentenced until the spring and then be back out. We're doing extremely well. We're never going to eradicate homelessness, mental health or addictions. It is worse since COVID. We're doing extremely well in Gray County and we need to take credit for that. And we need to start communicating that more so that people understand all the programs that are going into this. And this one being another trial that hopefully works. People will find that little thing that isn't working perfectly and criticize it, but overall we're doing extremely well. And I think we need to toot the horn. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And with that, I don't see any further hands up for discussions. So I'm going to call this question, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director McNabb. So what I would like to do is I would like to introduce the next item. And Madam Clerk will have the honorary position of just before lunch, Director Taylor will have to share on this day. So it is recommended that Gray County, that the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting minutes dated September 18th, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. There are six items that are there that have been published and the minutes have been circulated duly and are printed here on the agenda. So with that, I will ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Greg, seconded by Counselor Dobrine. It's now on the floor for discussion, Madam Clerk.
Thank you and good morning, County Council. The Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee met on September 18th to discuss a number of items. The first one up was a report from Gray County on the Accessibility Compliance Report, which has been submitted to or will be submitted to the Ministry of Seniors and Accessibility. It's a requirement to be submitted every two years and it's a self-assessment exercise that Gray County will undertake to look at its status of compliance with accessibility requirements. The assessment asks questions around compliance with employment standards, transportation standards, information and communication standards, design of public spaces and customer service. The second report was another report from Gray County regarding the reconstruction of Gray Road 12 and Markdale. And the report was seeking the feedback from the committee on pedestrian facilities and rest areas along this portion of the road. And, um, the report was seeking the feedback from the committee on, um, pedestrian facilities and rest areas along this portion of the road. Um, between Wellington Ave and Tara Drive. Um, staff noted there will be drop curbs and tactile plates at the crossings. There were questions addressed regarding the elevation of the retaining wall and nearby surroundings in order to determine the need for rest areas along that portion. Um, and discussion about whether there should be one in front of the church or the trail parking lot. Um, but overall, I think there was general consensus that there should be a rest area along that section. The next report was from Long Term Care for the, uh, renovation taking place at Gray Gables. In the Kids and Us space. They are, Kids and Us is undertaking the renovation in the building. Um, and the project was brought, brought forward for review and comment. So there has been consideration given to sufficient turning radius in the vestibule. Appropriate door sizes and widths and minimizations of instructions and the design of an accessible washroom and then new lighting being incorporated in as well. There were also comments shared on the importance of accessibility of the components within the washroom in addition to just the general design of the washroom itself. The next item was the Westray Multiyear Accessibility Plan. Um, it is a brand new plan as the past one has just expired, I believe last year. And it considered review of policies, customer service and accessibility, um, procurement. The, um, staff and attendants spoke to the accessible features appearing on the website. And, um, also, uh, noting their wish to hear from the public on any opportunities to hear, um. To hear opportunities to improve accessibility standards in the municipality. And that was the summary of that meeting. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding these minutes? We'll go to Counselor Greg.
And just a comment, but the Gray Road twelve, uh, project is a good example. This is a really good committee that did a really good job of finding the sweet spot in terms of the rest area discussion. And trying to position the project, um, to suit the needs now and in the future. But avoiding the overbuilt, uh, aspect because you can overbuild and you can underbuild, but, um, certainly just. Uh, my compliments to the committee at finding that what I think is really just the right sweet spot in that balance. Uh, so they had really good discussion and, uh, and just good to see, um, all the various considerations, um, in the recommendation. Thanks, Ter.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, not seeing any then. I'll call the question. All those in favor. That motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us just up to noon then. So if we could. Okay, uh, well, I've just received word that we can go a little bit longer. Um. We have one that will be item seven D then. It's recommended that the Budget and Finance Committee meeting minutes dated September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, uh, be adopted as presented. And the following resolutions be contain, uh, contained therein be endorsed. I will not read out the eight items because they have been circulated. Uh, and they have been circulated both in the minutes and on the agenda. But I will look for a mover and a seconder so that we can begin discussion. Moved by Counselor Carlton. Seconder, seconded by Counselor Keveney, and it's on the floor for discussion. Welcome back to the lectern and Director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, the Budget and Finance Committee met on September twenty fourth. We had a, a number of, uh. Things on the agenda. The first was a capital presentation, um, by Long Term Care. And Director Cornell presented, and this was the final presentation, um, from the. The departments with significant capital budgets. Um, she spoke about. Uh, that they rely heavily on their building condition assessment reports to develop their capital budget program. And highlighted that there is a source of funding from the province for comprehensive minor capital. It helps with minor repairs and upkeep of the home. And we've been utilizing that fund to offset some of the, um, costs for. Planned work that normally would come from their respective reserves. Uh, we then talked about, uh, the twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven Budget Assumptions and Timelines Report. Uh, and talked about the timeline where, um, departments, finance. And are reviewing draft budgets with, uh, the CAO, Deputy CAO. That's, uh, ongoing and finishes up next Wednesday. Uh, we talked about, uh, at the October twenty ninth Budget and Finance Committee, there'll be a high level overview and to discuss capital projects. And then to the review of the draft budget, November twenty sixth, in advance of committee, the whole meetings, December fifth and twelfth. Um, then we followed up with Deputy CAO, um, provided a report on twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven staffing requests. And, um, there were a number of requests put forward. They were discussed. And they are summarized in the motion. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you for that introduction then. And with that, we will put it out on the floor for questions and comments. This, of course, is just the preamble that will lead us up to our greater discussion days when we get to the actual draft budget. Not seeing any hands go up nor online. I think you've answered any questions that may be there with the material that was presented through the minutes. I'll call the question then. All those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. I'll just, uh, look for the moment to the clerks. Okay, so I have received word that lunch has arrived. It is a hot lunch. Um, we do have. Two more items to discuss. Uh, that includes the one item that's in closed session. So. Uh, I'm looking for consensus that we break for lunch at this point in time. Yes, I'm seeing that. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to break for lunch at the, this time. Then we will come back to item seven E and then go into closed session. And let's break until, if we could come back at quarter two, uh, to twelve forty five, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we are back from our break and we are moving on with item seven E. It's recommended that the Joint Municipal Services Committee meeting minutes dated September twenty six, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented. And the following resolutions contain, uh, contain therein be endorsed. There are seven of them listed that have been published and circulated both in the minutes and on the agenda. So I will look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Eccles, seconded by, uh, Counselor Pringle. So it's now on the floor for discussion. And, uh, welcome to the lectern this afternoon, uh, Deputy CAO.
Oh, I don't know whether speaking before lunch or after lunch is worse. There's a big green sticker that tells me which button to press and apparently I didn't clue on to that was pressing the wrong one, but there we go. Good afternoon and, uh, through you, uh, through you, uh, Warden. Um, uh, thank you very much. I'm going to give a very quick update. Of the, uh, the last Joint Municipal Services Committee meeting. Um, we met and discussed the priorities that had been ranked by the committee through its first meeting. Um, and talked about next steps, uh, that we're, we've, uh, we've managed to sort of plot, plot out, uh, for a course of action on those areas. So, uh, I'll go quickly through them. Uh, the first one was Waste Management, which is a, um, a service which is delivered. Um, uh, by member municipalities, um, and has been a subject of conversation around this horseshoe a number of times over the years. And through the Joint Municipal Services Committee, there was interest expressed in looking at, um, uh, considering closer ways of working, um, across the county. Uh, with, with the potential ultimately that the, that services could be partially or fully, um, uh, altered in their service delivery mechanism. Uh, to potentially a county, a county-led, um, a county-led model. Uh, so there has been a very successful community of practice meeting. Over the last, uh, two years, a year and a half, um, discussing the ways in which we deliver services, the similarities that exist between municipalities. And the differences, uh, that we currently have, um, across the landscape of waste management and waste collection services in the county. So we have a fairly good understanding. Uh, of what's, what's happening out there. Uh, the next step in that process, uh, we believe. Uh, and we're recommending is to undertake a regional waste management strategy. It would look at all the services that are currently being provided and how they're being provided. It would look at the ways in which those services are being provided in other communities. Um, and different models that have been applied in those communities, uh, and different ways in which those services could be, uh, delivered in the future, which may realize efficiencies. Um, cost savings, uh, and service level enhancements to community groups. And so, um, coming from that, uh, meeting. Uh, if endorsed by, uh, council to a committee today and council in a couple of weeks' time. Uh, there would be a budget request you would see in front of you as part of the twenty twenty six budget, uh, to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one side. To engage a consultant to undertake that regional waste review. Uh, the second of the areas we spent some time talking about was staffing and HR services. We talked a lot as a committee about similarities that exist. Between the member municipalities and the county across Gray, uh, and some of the ways in which we, we could look at ways of, of closer alignment again. There is a, uh, an effective working group of HR managers and HR professionals that already collaborate, um, informally across the county. And so really what we're recommending at this point is formalizing that process a little bit more, uh, and taking first steps towards looking at how we could deliver. A, a joint training program, more joined up, uh, delivery of training. Our, our staff. Uh, in both Gray County and across member municipalities are undertaking very similar trainings in areas such as. Operations, in health and safety, in HR. Uh, and so there are some, um, there are some, uh, easy wins. In terms of aligning and closer alignment of those training courses. We also talked about some of the, uh, the, the, what would have been termed softer skills. Around, um, finding efficiencies. So lean type training, uh, project management training, change management training and how, um, they could be delivered. Um, in a different way. And so we're going to take first steps. We're advising that we take, uh, first steps, uh, towards a collective, uh, collective approach to training. A more collective approach and collaborative approach to training, um, in future years. It's fair to say that that conversation went a lot further than training. Um, we explored all kinds of different areas where, um, uh, human resource services. Uh, training services and other, other areas around the staffing, retention and recruitment side could be further, um, further merged or further shared between municipalities. Uh, but we felt that this would be the first, uh, first good step coming out from that committee discussion. Uh, the last area, and I know this is an area close to, uh, close to many of your hearts, uh, was around healthcare and physician recruitment. Uh, which was, uh, which was, uh, a topic that had been raised at the first one and given some degree of prioritization. Uh, we've not been able to do a great deal in terms of what that would look like in respect of future actions, um, between the first municipal service committee. And the second one, what we have managed to do is meet with the, um, OHT locally, Great Bruce OHT. Uh, have a conversation with them in regards to, um, their work and, and what that looks like locally. Um, and to start to build a, build an understanding of whether the Gray, whether Gray County could add value in support of the conversations around healthcare. And physician recruitment. We, we understand that that's a field where there's many, many hands, uh, already involved. And so the first step we wanted to make sure of is that. We wouldn't further muddy waters and in fact could be a, a clarifying influence rather than a muddying influence. And, and by all partners, it would appear that there is a role that the county could. Could play. And so a- again, with the, uh, the support and endorsement of, of council. Uh, our work would be to now sit down further with people that have been involved, both from a municipal perspective in the past, as well as OHT. To try and clarify what the Gray County role would be. So as with the first meeting, it was a great, great collaborative discussion. Identified a lot of opportunities that we can explore and, and so, uh, I'm happy to take any questions that might follow along from that.
Thank you very much for that introduction. So we'll put it out for County Council for comments and questions. We'll start with Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you now for the report. Are the, uh, items on here in order of priority or are they simply there? As the course of the meeting, the conversation took place.
Uh, so through you, Madam Warden, um, good question. Uh, I can't remember would be the answer. Uh, so we did a. Uh, we did a prioritization exercise in the first meeting. Um, where we really left that was just identifying the top three. So we had, I think there were eleven items on that list. Um, and I think we're going to work on all eleven over time. So the other, the other, uh, eight or so, if my math is serving me correctly, have not been forgotten about. Um, uh, but there's no particular order in terms of the way in which we, we put them into the report now.
Okay, other questions, comments? We'll go to Counselor Greg.
Two questions. I guess the first one's a very. Quick question. I was surprised to see, um, be directed to collate a library, but I surprised to see of HR policies. After the library. I just wonder, is library something that the committee has gotten that plan of eleven items? Have they went there in any of the discussion? Uh, is there future discussion forthcoming on it? And the second question is. A little bit more information on the regional waste management plan, like, um. I've heard some discuss the idea of working together to secure like one vendor. But you have to be careful for what you wish for because right now there's a couple players in the marketplace and. Uh, that's a good thing. If you were to advance towards one particular vendor for your whole area, in ten years, you might come to. To, um, regret that decision. So I'm just wondering, uh, at this point. What type of outcomes, um, is the committee, uh, envisioning?
Uh, so through you, Madam Warden, um, to the first question, uh, library has been discussed in the past. Um, library as a, a, a Gray County service is not one of the ones that came up on this list. Um, so, so the use of the word library in this particular instance was specific to the HR policy realm of things, uh, rather than a more generic approach. Um, uh, in, in regards to waste management, I think, I think the, the concept here is it, it's far too early to say what that could look like. Um, so the, the nature of the landscape has shifted significantly. If, if you roll back, um, one or two contracts ago. There was a great deal more diversity in that marketplace than there is today. And you're quite correct. There are, there are two local players and one local player has achieved. Um, significantly more footprint over the last few years due to some provincial changes than, than the other one. So, so we're already seeing that market shift quite significantly. And so I think, uh, part of the work of the regional waste management strategy is to look to see how that we could, we could. Use that changing landscape to our advantage. Are there advantages that we could explore? Um, and it could well be that at the end of that, um, it's, it's status quo or it is rolling up of some services. So for example. Uh, if you go next door to Bruce County, they've rolled up household hazardous waste collection to a county level, but they've left, uh, curbside collection to, to, uh, member municipal level. So there's, there's no one size fits all. And I think the, uh, the idea behind undertaking this next step in terms of looking at the strategy. To see where there are some opportunities. And so, you know, another example of that is, uh, we have varying different, um, capacities across Gray County in terms of landfill. We have varying different capacities in terms of how we deal with organic waste. And so I know that our colleagues in Southgate are, are processing their own organic waste on site. In fact, doing so in a way, uh, with capacity that could be shared. And so are there, there are, are there some efficiencies we can find within? Um, uh, that aren't going to necessarily cost any of us anymore. And so I think that would be the next step.
Okay, uh, we'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
I'll reserve that comment. Um. Yeah, I was, I was thinking of something, but I won't do that. Um. How did you arrive at a consulting fee of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Quarter of a million dollars to evaluate the potential for a regional waste management system? My gut reaction is that it's somewhat wasteful. Thank you. Pun intended. And, uh, yeah, so that aspect of it. And yes, Southgate has a very, um, forward-thinking waste diversion program for some twenty. Three years and the organics does have capacity. We are non-unionized. And having come from a city where they convert the waste management system to, you know, private sector. And one side of the highway gets waste pickup and the other one's on strike. Um, so I would have, I have concerns about it. If I recall, this was looked at not too long ago, like not too many years ago. Maybe before two, twenty twenty. Would we not look at that study first and see what the results were? Or why we didn't, it wasn't pursued at that time? Thank you.
Uh, so I, I might rely on the, the CAO to help me out on this one, but, uh, to get started and through you, uh, Madam Warden. Um, so the, the work that was done in twenty twenty was initiated by a request, um, from member municipalities to have a look at this. And indeed, we did take some steps towards that, but we never actually completed the study. There was, there were some funding challenges and there was certainly a pressure of time back in 2020 on getting this one done to the the kinds of the study. So it didn't actually happen. So so we aren't repeating work that has been done. We're really coming back to work that had already been requested to be done that we haven't yet managed to get to. So so there's that piece. To the, to the the value of this work, we've, we've taken that value base from some of that initial work that was done in 2020 to scope out what this could look like. And and obviously built a little bit of a buffer in because we are now four or five years after that. We've also looked at some of the work that's been done in neighboring counties. So Simco's done similar work and Bruce County's done similar work. And these are the sorts of values that they've been getting back in terms of the consulting costs associated for doing a body of work, which is, which is essentially looking at at 10 organizations and how they organize waste and manage waste, looking at the provincial landscape for that, and then trying to map out what would happen. So it's a fairly significant body of work. As always, and I know I'm gonna, I'm stood up here and my colleagues will say the same thing. My hope would be is that as an upper limit and not a limit that we're aiming to get to. But based on those, the the look on the landscape, that's roughly what these pieces of work are costing.
So should this be approved with an upset limit of 250,000, the R F P would go out and we would still have an opportunity to yea or nay the decision to award the consulting tender?
So through you, Madam Warden, absolutely. So we're not actually looking for approval right now to even get started on this work. That would be something which will come through the budget process. So if this is approved through the budget process, the, the, the hope would be to write collectively an R F P scope of works that would be done through that community practice, through the C A O group and through the Joint Municipal Services Group. That would then go out to market to be bid on, and it would come back through the traditional procurement channels for councils approval.
Just further to Deputy CEO Lobley's comments. As, as Niles indicated, the you know, the the step today would be to include this as part of the budget. So that'd be part of the budget considerations. We are proposing to fund that from both a waste manager reserve and a one-time funding reserve combination in order to fund that project. As Niles correctly indicated, just past COVID, there was a motion that was put forward by a municipality to look into this. At that time, there was provincial funding through the missile modernization funding. There was tight timelines and we asked for an extension to that timeline. Unfortunately, that extension was not provided. And therefore, we felt that, given the comprehensiveness of this study and the length of time it likely will take, we just couldn't meet that timeline at that time. So therefore, that's why that project didn't proceed then. We have since then have had several meetings with waste management staff from the various municipalities. We've called it the Waste Manager Community Practice. We've collected some data and information as part of those discussions. So we think we're at a good starting point. We'll, of course, include that information as part of the R F P document. And like Niles said, we're hoping this is an upper limit. We hope we've been able to collect some of that information to maybe help cut some of those costs, so to speak, initially, because that would have been required anyways as part of that initial first step for that study. But we've already done some of that base work to help inform the study. So so I think we're at a good starting point with it and hopefully we'll get some costs. That 250 was what we proposed. What was the estimate back in 2021, we were considering this study back then.
And you just reminded me of one more thing is that with producer responsibility, the recycling component of that landscape may have changed for all of our municipalities, which kind of throws a wrinkle into the information that might have been collected five years ago. Okay, thank you. We're going to go to Counselor Echols next.
$250,000, is that going to be the finding fee? To find that study that was done in 1994 on waste management at a county level? How much? I mean, we've been down this path before and I'm not going to dwell on it, but we've got studies upon studies on how the county can get into waste management. And now we're going to do another one or propose. And I'm just, this isn't towards you, Deputy CEO. This is, this is this committee letting us come forward. I'd have a hard time, a very hard time supporting this in a budget. I'll just put that upfront. That's all. And for anybody's 1994, there was a study done by the county on all how the county could do waste management. I have seen it. It's sitting someplace in the vault, Randy. Was it a million? I thought it was a million too, but yeah, it was well over a million dollars that that study cost at that time. And it was fully funded by the province. So anyways, just saying it's, there is one out there.
The C A O would like to respond.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. Counselor Echols is correct. There was a study that was done in early 90s for sure. And in terms of looking at waste management, I think at that time it was scoped in terms of looking at a potential expansion of an existing landfill at that time, and whether or not that could serve a wider area in terms of landfill capacity. As Niall indicated, the landscape has significantly changed on the wayside. As Counselor DeBreen just indicated, the recycling aspects have significantly changed or continue to change. Even month to month, it seems. So so we think that although there was a previous study that was completed, and again, some of that will help inform some background information that we can provide to the consultants who hopefully keep the cost down as low as we can. But we think there's merit to exploring this based on some of the conversations, again, that we've had collectively through that community practice. And and to at least see if there's opportunities and whether or not it's across a wide spectrum of just working together on promotional materials and helping to to educate and 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 be aware of all the changing, changes that are occurring and sharing some of those, those communications and services rate through to potentially the county, then assuming waste management and lots of stuff in between there. So we think there's a number of options that can be explored. Obviously, doing that cost benefit analysis to see what makes the most sense or what might make the most sense. And then, of course, bringing that back to council and the respective member municipal councils for consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'll look around the room. We'll go to Counselor Kentner next.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasovs. I, I think that all of our, all of us in the first tiers are going through a process right now where we are trying to get to our first budget meeting without having to start at six or seven percent because of preapprovals. And to me, this, the the waste management problem sounds a lot like the housing problem. Is there a jurisdiction anywhere that has solved it? On either side of the border, for that matter. Like, I, I think we're, should really think hard about this quarter million because every four times you spend it, you're down a million. I, I just, I just, I know where those of us who are speaking this way are treading where angels fear to, but honestly, I think we have we can gather on our own all the information we need to know how we can deal with with it more effectively in Gray County. And then we can talk to Bruce County and Simcoe County and Dufferin County and Wellington County. Is there a firm out there that we know actually specializes in presenting a plan that will be so much more effective than what we're doing now? Those are my points. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do you, do you want? Okay.
Just to the latter question in terms of whether or there's, there's firms that specialize in this area. Yes, there's several firms that that we're aware of that have, again, other neighboring counties have utilized in the past to do a similar study. So we know that there's, there's, there's firms out there that specialize in this area. And yeah, and so to leave it up.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Body.
Just to respond to some of the concerns, changes are coming pretty quickly in this, in this area. I, I know Meaford got a contract recently for garbage removal a couple of years ago, but they got whacked. And at that point, they're saying, we need help. We need to think, think bigger. Blue box has changed since 1894. I don't know, was there? There's probably people around the table that weren't born then. Oh, sorry, sorry, Dana, I was talking about you, but there's something like only 10 years left in a lot of landfill sites in Ontario. When that demand changes, you know, the demand stays the same, the supply comes down, economics, the cost is going up, and we need to start looking ahead 10 years from now, not looking at the next election, frankly. And moving ahead and figuring out how we can do this. At some point, there's potentially nine municipalities are going to be looking at spending $250,000 on a consultant's report if we don't get our act together and try and do it as one and move the ball forward in behalf of all of us and and start looking at it now. The last report, I think you said, was 2000 or 2020, that the last time we looked at it, we didn't get the funding to do the report. And I know Al Barfett was around at the time because I can picture him out at where we were at the time having the discussion. That's five years that have gone by already. So double that by two and all of a sudden we're in trouble. So we need to start thinking ahead. And that was the whole thought in the discussion at the committee is each of us has individual contracts, each of us has different landfill abilities, but at some point, we're all going to get whacked. So we'd be better to put our heads together, move the ball forward and be ready when, when we do get whacked. So that was the thinking and why we're looking at trying to plan ahead and spend a little bit of money now. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go over to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good discussion. And I know years we did have discussion about a regional approach. I know with us of Great Highlands, we went into a contract with the first time with the bins. And I know our colleagues from the south have been doing it for a lot of years and we tried it and it seems like people like them. From saying that, that contract, when that garbage is picked up from our roadside, it doesn't go into our landfill. These are municipality and goes somewhere else. I mean, we do have a landfill that people bring tipping fees and or to, you know, like land, like whatever they have for trailers and stuff like that. But on that contract, now we don't have organics, but it it leaves just from that contract. And we just moved a motion to extend that for two more years. It was originally three and to look at for two, an extension of two more years. So there is models out there that for whatever, however, but I will say that just in the sense of today's, today's dynamics around garbage and organics, I think myself, Counselor Millen and Counselor Echols, we attended a session or a fella a year ago last January at Roma, but I think it's actually in Southgate that they're taking organics and making energy. So the dynamics have changed because there is money in the, in those organics now because they are converting that organics into energy and and gas or clean gas or whatever. So there, there is a lot of dynamics that are changing and you know, efficiency is, is good, is good. It just, I know when we went to that contract, it's, we, we still have to pay. It gets still there on that sense of cost. But material does leave. If, if the, if the part is around not having landfill space. So I just shared that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Pinger.
Thanks, Warden. Yeah, I just offered my support to Counselor Boddy over there. This is really a process, I think we wanted to get going as opposed to having nine single voices trying to fight your own battle that we can unite and be one voice as a group and do better things to make efficiencies in the in the world of waste management. We all know that things have changed a lot in 30 years. So and are still changing and evolving every day. But it was really around us trying to find efficiencies amongst the nine of us to be able to support. You're right, it's a quarter of a million dollars as they ask. Hopefully, we don't get that far on it on the price side of things, but we don't know what we don't know right now. So we need to ask the question.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Greg.
Yeah, I was just going to say, one of the most controversial discussions probably any municipalities could have in the province would be on waste management. And when you get talking about right across boundaries from each other. So this more than a lot of studies, it does have a value add in terms of if it is demonstrated, and I'm looking at it right now, it was 1998. Was the landfill study because there's a preferred landfill site that's on page five of 533 pages right there in front of me. It gives you as a council that document that can prevent you from literally going at each other across the table on on a discussion that is, can be and is demonstrated to be so controversial. And as, as Member Body indicated, waste management in the province is only going to get more strenuous. And it's occurring extremely quickly with population growth, even even shortening that window. So we are going to get there. But I think at least the value in the document is it does provide probably a better environment for proper discussion. And and again, this time is only an ask to go into the budget. But if it does advance, it takes away some of the the personal feelings in such a controversial discussion. So thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I will go back just to know firsthand, so I'll go back to Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden. And certainly, do we have to spend 250,000 to have that discussion? Or should we have a a discussion on the report that that Counselor Echols has talked about? And because I'm thinking, and I know in the past, some municipalities had landfill space and others didn't. And I remember the discussion, some didn't want to give up that space for others. But if the new model is, say, for example, like our contract, we have a, a countywide contract, pick up all the garbage, it leaves, maybe you still have your, your, your own restation for your, for what comes in, but the garbage itself is from a contract across, across the county. I mean, like to do that, like what would be involved with looking at that? I just know from, it was a little bit tough for us to get follow through on what we ended up going down with the bins. You know, people saying pulling and stuff like that. I know Southgate has been doing it. There was some application from Southgate to our staff and stuff, but it's gone through that process and it seems to work. But it leaves. So is that an easy possibility? I know, I know, I don't know what all the contracts coming do with all the municipalities. But if you have a larger company that's dealing with garbage, all we're looking at is providing the service. I guess it's for the cost and what that cost is. But if those that don't have landfill space, obviously, that's a bigger issue than but even for ourselves, the roadside garbage is not going into our landfill, which is sort of unique. Which I think maybe helps eliminate some of that issue that was the issues of the past. Was we got space, you don't have space. Sorry, we don't want you to use our space because that's our space. I think that was part of the issue a few years back. The same.
Okay, thank you very much. And of course, we are just voting on, on bringing it forth for discussion in the 2026 budget. So, so this, this dialogue is very healthy. I think that gives staff a little heads up about the kinds of questions that are going to be coming forward. And and in addition to that would be the lens of what's changed. I know from the town of the mountains, we've extended the life of our landfill because we do drywall diversion and drywall recycling made a huge difference. So that again would be a different picture than what was happening 30 years ago. I also hear from, from the varied experiences of of the historic dialogues on this that I'm sure all of us are going to be keen to get a hold of that 1994 report and be able to be on the same page when we come back to this and have a discussion. If somebody's referring to something to be able to get the full picture. And I think that will be a, a healthy continuation of this dialogue at that point in time. Okay, so with that, then I don't see any further hands up. And it was for all of the seven items that were contained in that report. And it was for all of the seven items that were contained in that report. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. So we'll need a moment to switch over to go into closed meeting, but I'll need the motion to go into closed. It's recommended that the committee, the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations regarding social services, OPSU Local two six six. May I ask for a motion? Moved by Counselor Nielsen, seconded by Counselor McKay. All those in favor? And we will take a moment to go into closed session. Thank you. Okay, so we are back. We have risen out of closed session. And I can report that the committee, the whole met in closed session to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations regarding social services, OPSU Local two six six. And direction was provided to staff. With that, we will move to item nine, other business. Any other business? Yes, Counselor McQueen.
Just briefly, everyone, I attended a meeting with regards to the Non-Bosaga Valley Conservation Authority just a week or so ago. Briefly, something that representatives from Simcoe County farmers brought up was there is a new system called site, they're looking for sites for the Arctic Over the Horizon Radar Program. In a nutshell, in Simcoe County, east of Stainer, seven hundred acres have been bought up. What the idea is, and from, from what I actually understand from the deputy mayor of Clearview is what they're looking for is a sterilized about up to four thousand acres of land. Good farmland, three thousand acres plus a thousand acres of upperland to create this bounce that's for this new radar system. And they're looking for something under the forty-six parallel. The concern is, it was raised there, Clearview, their council, we actually endorsed it at our council last week. The concern is of taking four thousand acres of good farmland out of production. And basically, no roads, no infrastructure. Basically, I don't know, I keep thinking of Meaford Tank Range, but of what happened there. So anyway, just on radar, I don't know, I can forward maybe some information, maybe to Tara, if this council body is interested in looking at that. But just, it's sort of an F Y I right now, but we talk about the preservation of farmland and to lose four thousand acres of good farmland is something I think we should be aware of anyway.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, at this point in time, I'll put a call out. Are there any notices or motion? Any notices or motion? Not seen any hands online or here in the chamber. We'll move on to adjournment. It's recommended that we adjourn at one thirty-three P M. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor DeBreen, seconded by Counselor Patterson. It doesn't count when you put two hands up at once. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Count, Committee the Whole is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.